For the Commissioners, Lee Jones.
Here.
Kenny Giffens.
Here.
Julie Thomas.
Here.
For the Plan Commission. Margaret Clemmons.
Here.
Julie Thomas.
Here.
Bernie Garitas.
Here.
Amy Thompson. Okay, you also, Jerry Pittsford.
Here.
David Warren.
Here.
Jeff McKim.
Here.
Jim Stainbrook. So we have seven members in a quorum of the Plan.
You didn't call my name first.
Oh, I'm sorry, trying to write Randolph.
Here.
Thank you.
So, the purpose of today's meeting is actually a continuance from yesterday's meeting. We have received the formal memorandum of agreement that is the subject of this discussion between Monroe County and the Monroe County Plan Commission and the Huff, the Huff's property. And so, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss this and see if we can pass and approve this memorandum of agreement. So I'd like to open the discussion to the members of the Plan Commission and to see if there are any items that you find that you would like to discuss. Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you. And I, this is, I guess, a question for Mr. Schilling. I believe I know the answer, but just to clarify, our options here are to approve or not approve this agreement. We are not negotiating the language or the terms. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Pittsford, I saw your hand raised.
Yes, Jeff kind of asked my question, but I have a couple of other questions. One is procedural in nature, and that question would be, are we going to have one motion or two? Is one motion sufficient for both bodies to vote on? Or do you have to have a separate motion for each body?
I think we will have a separate motion for each body.
Okay, so whenever someone makes a motion, they should declare that they're making a motion for the Plan Commission's consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I just want to note that Mr. Stainbrook has joined us. So, Mr. Wilson, for your roll call and for everybody's edification, Mr. Stainbrook, welcome. We're taking questions from Plan Commission members on this agreement, proposed agreement.
Thank you for the acknowledgement, and my apologies to all. Somehow, I mistakenly got the idea yesterday's meeting was at 5:30. I came early today, apparently not quite early enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clemmons, if I may continue, I had one more question.
Yes, Mr. Pittsford.
And it's a question for Plan Commission members. Are there any Plan Commission members who do not feel like they've had adequate time to review this memorandum of agreement and to further review facts of the case if they were so inclined, which I actually have done myself? Thank you to Dave Schilling for including the case number. I was able to research it and go through and look at the relevant documents or documents that I deemed relevant for my consideration in whether or not this memorandum of agreement was adequate or not. So my question is, are there any Plan Commissioners who did not, do not feel like they had time?
If so, please indicate by letting us know that you would like to speak. And Jackie, I can't always see who is wishing to speak.
I don't see anyone right now, Margaret.
Okay, okay. Then if that's not the case, if people feel comfortable to make a decision regarding this case today, I'd like to continue to open it up and to, to the Plan Member, Plan Commission Members for further discussion, if any.
If there's no further discussion, I would be prepared to make a motion for the Plan Commission consideration, please.
Mr. Pittsford, can we wait till the Commissioners have reviewed, asked questions, and we've had public comment?
Okay, that's fine.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I didn't know we were going to treat them as two separate things, and I'd forgotten we had public comments, so I'm good with that, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate your indulgence.
Mr. Garitas, you have a comment?
Just a very quick question. On the item number two, it states that the Huff's will choose the engineer in conjunction with our MS4 operator. Does, I'm assuming that's a professional engineer that carries the liabilities associated with that profession? And then secondly, is there any, does the county have any say in the next selection? And that's all I've got.
Mr. Schilling, would you please answer that question?
Yeah, I think it was acknowledged that it would be a licensed professional engineer, and we didn't specify specifically, or we didn't say that it had to be a specific engineer. But the licensing would be the part that was acknowledged.
Okay, and does the county have any ability to offer the de-selection if they don't, if they don't choose that person or if they don't like that person?
No, no. That's...
That would be the purpose of Mr. Quilman or the MS4 Coordinator to collaborate with them and see if they could find agreement, and if not, it would go to, eventually to mediation if we couldn't resolve the case between the two parties. And Mr. Warren, I saw that you had a question?
Yeah, and I really appreciated the discussion yesterday, and there was a good discussion of costs and benefits, too. I just want to, and this might have been covered, but I want to give Mr. Schilling a chance to also just comment on sort of, let's say this wasn't agreed to, we went forward with litigation, what are the, what are the opportunity costs involved in that? Like, how much of your time or county legal's time is, would be taken up in litigation? And would that take us away from other needs?
Well, yeah, I guess, our feeling in the legal department is that this agreement results, will give us about the same result as if we engaged in protracted litigation for a couple of years, and an additional benefit of this, there's a couple. But one is that it would allow the county to get on the property quicker, and if there's, or more quickly, and if there are any erosion issues that are determined between, under paragraph two, that they would be addressed much sooner than if we continued to litigate. The other aspect of it is just the, the time cost for staff, to prepare for litigation and engage in that. It would be, it's a very time-consuming thing, and there are other matters that are being neglected right now. And so we think that if we can get reasonably close with this settlement agreement, that the county's interest would be better served.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm sorry, I was waving at the postal carrier. But if there aren't any other, sorry, I always, I always, I always say hi. If there aren't, sorry about that, if there aren't any other questions from Plan Commission Members, if you don't mind, we could turn it over to my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jones, questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Wilson if he could give us exactly what the scenario would have been, or at least as exact as he can, if the Huff's, when they first found out they were out of compliance, had immediately tried to come into compliance?
Well, I think fortunately, most of you on the Plan Commission Commissioners have experience with the, with the planning department, how we deal with people who aren't in conformance. It's fairly simple, we work with people to try to bring them into conformance. There are a number of reasons for doing that. It's what the ordinance requires. And secondly, from the landowner's standpoint, unless they're in conformance with our zoning ordinance, they're not entitled to receive an improvement location permit. And that's usually how this comes up. Somebody comes in for an improvement location permit, and as a part of the review, we noticed structures or land disturbance that was not permitted as required by the ordinance. We recently had a case where roughly an acre was disturbed within the ECO1 area, which is similar to this case. And the individuals came in, wanted to become in compliance because they couldn't get a building permit, couldn't get an improvement location permit, and they filed a, what we call a after-the-fact grading permit, and a requested variances for the disturbances that had occurred in the area one, steep slope regulated area. Basically, they submitted an updated site plan showing the changes they'd made to the property, that which the BCA, in this case, the BCA approved a variance for the disturbance that had occurred within the steep slope area. That's the process we follow for everything, where there's a non-conformity.
I guess what I was asking more is, for example, and having been on the Plan Commission, I really know, would there have been a fine involved?
We should.
I mean, if, if they had immediately come into compliance, would any further action of any sort have been taken by the county?
Our goal in compliance is not to assess fines, it's to bring people in compliance. It's only when we have to go to court in order to achieve compliance, or someone intentionally disregards, knowingly disregards our ordinance, that we seek a fine. Again, even in this case, we want to see this property come into compliance. I really don't care about fines, that's up to the legal department and the courts, but we want to see the property come into compliance. It's important for our overall efforts in enforcing the zoning ordinance. Again, as I said yesterday, our desire in the planning department is to treat the Huff's the same as any other landowner in Monroe County. It's important for the validity of the zoning ordinance that no one is treated differently. And the concerns I have with this agreement is it basically sets up a special process and procedure for this particular property, as opposed to following the procedures set forth in the ordinance and by state statute. And I know this has been a burden on the legal department, but this agreement shifts the burden to the planning department, where we have to deal with, basically, no, something without any guidance, because the ordinance does not apply. And if there's a dispute, we go down a rabbit hole of mediation. And we do not have the time to deal with it under those circumstances. We have people who've applied for permits and have followed the regulations and need us to look through them and review them and issue permits. And that's our main focus. We can't be put in a position where we have to mediate every factor in regard to somebody coming into compliance. It's very simple, they need to file an amended site plan, they need to file a grading erosion control plan, they need to seek any variances for activities that have occurred that were not in compliance to the ordinance, and they need to seek permits for any future structures or activities they desire. Again, that's the ordinance, that's the state law, that's what we want to follow.
If I might, and I think it's a great question, and Lee, Ms. Jones, I'm going to come back to you in a moment. Mr. Schilling, did you want to respond to that concern about whether we're following our local ordinances or not, et cetera, that were raised just now?
Yeah, I have, I have quite a different perspective on the agreement that was fashioned after 10 hours of mediation. This does not set up a special procedure. Going forward, they're going to apply for the permits. This is consistent with the way we've dealt with other enforcement actions. So, we think that proving the agreement would not, would actually be treating the defendants in this case the same way we would treat defendants in, in most of our cases. And I do agree with Larry that compliance has always been our objective rather than finding, so that would be my response.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, sorry to step on your toes, please continue with questions or comments. Okay.
I was actually finished.
Thanks. Commissioner Giffens? You're muted.
I think what Mr. Warren raised about cost and benefit analysis is really on target, and I, as I, as I had a chance to think about this overnight and talk with, with Dave Schilling, this really gets down to about permits. And faster that we can get onto the property, bring people into compliance, the less likely we are to have further problems that might be related to Lake Monroe. We don't know what's happening right now, we don't know if there's a lot of erosion, a lot of silt dumping in, we don't, we don't know today. And I don't want to wait another year, two years to find out. And quite frankly, I don't think the Huff's should want to either, because if there's continued erosion, they're going to have more to do in terms of mitigation.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I'm going to, Ms. Clemmons, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, if that's okay?
Yes.
We just ask people to be brief, we won't time you, but this isn't a good moment for a filibuster, as we're keeping another meeting on hold. But does anyone have, from the public, have any comments or questions?
Jackie, I won't be able to see this, so if you would be able to manage that, I'd be grateful.
Sure, and I'll note Tech Services is also on the call.
I would, I would like to make a statement, if that's okay?
Yes, Mr. Bob Zian, Bob Zian?
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, thank you, everyone, for allowing time for public comment on this important matter. If the county agrees to this settlement, I believe they are unwittingly drafting a blueprint for every single future developer who wants to build on the shores of Lake Monroe and is seeking guidance on how to deal with the county. The tactics the Huff's have used to delay, distract, and frustrate both the community and local officials will undoubtedly be referenced and used over and over again by developers in future litigation, because the simple truth is, it works. Ask anyone in real estate, and they will tell you that the success of their business is based on a simple calculation of risk and reward. And we all know that the land along the shoreline of the lake is incredibly valuable, and if the Huff's are able to demonstrate that the county is unwilling to stand its ground and thoroughly enforce its ordinances, future developers will employ the very same tactics they used, simply factor in the cost of a lawsuit with the county as a component of their initial investment, because they know they can still net a profit that easily reaches millions of dollars despite legal costs. The settlement seems like a get-out-of-jail-free card for the Huff's, as they are demanding zero accountability for the last three years of violations, and a system of oversight for current and future development that is of their choosing. They continue to work out there daily on that property for one reason, they know they can get away with it. And as county officials, your job is to oversee and enforce the safe and sustainable growth of our community. And with that in mind, a decision to settle because it will save a little time and money right now is incredibly short-sighted and dangerously, dangerously flawed. It is critical that all of you make the decision to do what is right in this instance and not what is easy by agreeing to the settlement simply because the landowner is aggressive, well-funded, and employs a large legal team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your comments. Anyone else have comments or questions from the public? I can see that there aren't any hands raised. There may be somebody on the phone who wishes to speak. I have a 239 number that...
Yes, hello?
Yes. Could you give us your name, please?
My name, yes, my name is Michael Kane. I have a question for, I think, the legal team for the county. I've heard a lot of talk about what the risks are in going forward with litigation in the future and what the costs may be to the county and, and in legal expenses and so on. And my question is, over, a little over a year ago, in the, in the initial hearing in this case, in Circuit Court, the legal team referenced accumulated penalties that had already reached, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was several million dollars at that time, because they accrue daily. But there's been no talk of possible penalties as a mitigating factor in going back to litigation. Instead, it seems like the county is paying rather than assessing fines for ignoring the process that Mr. Wilson referenced a few minutes ago. I just wonder if Mr. Schilling could address what happened to the potential penalties. Thank you.
Yes, gladly. As, as the penalties are authorized by our ordinance, we asked, you know, if we, if we want to seek a penalty, we have to ask a judge, and the judge decides whether a penalty is to be issued. So, and as, and Mr. Wilson noted, our approach is always to obtain compliance and, and not penalties. And so we think we've, we've accomplished that, that objective in this, in, through this agreement. With respect to the payment, the payment is not for the enforcement action, the, the payment is to settle a counterclaim, and working with our insurance company and talking about the costs of doing that, they believe that even if we prevail, we would be spending tens of thousands of dollars. So, we regard this as a settlement of the counterclaim, not a payment on the enforcement action. And that's the way the agreement is written.
Well, I'd make one further observation, if I may.
Please, sir.
The county has incurred over two years of illegal expenses, and the Huff's have been out of compliance for over two years. It just seems to me that, you know, that penalties are in order, based on non-compliance up to this point. That's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you very much for taking my call.
Thank you so much for participating. It looks like we have Mr. Paul. The question or comment?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Welcome.
I'm inclined, I'm inclined to agree, to agree with the previous two people that, the other thing that concerned me about yesterday was the speed that this has taken. There was a conversation, I believe, by Commissioner Thomas, asking, you know, what would the ramifications be if we delayed this, you know, or two hours or four hours? Ever really got an answer from the attorneys. Why is it such a rush that it be done so quickly? So now, the compromise was from yesterday to today, which still doesn't give people, I think, a lot of time to think about it. I think Commissioner Jones almost apologetically said, you know, I really would like some time to look at it. I think that's the job of the Commissioners. And frankly, from the public standpoint, I appreciate the fact that I could get to it yesterday or last night, but there just hasn't been much discussion about it. And anytime, especially when attorneys tell me, we got to do this right away, I think there's got to be an underlying reason why. I just don't see why this has to be done so quickly. So is there something that we are not saying that we should? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schilling, did you want to address that question?
Yeah, we adopted the agreement, and it's not a very extensive one, it relates to an issue that we've been dealing with for a couple of years, so I, you know, we think people have a good understanding of what's going on. But also, there's a scheduling conference tomorrow with the court, and we were hoping to get this issue resolved before the scheduling conference, so that we can find out whether the matter will be dismissed or whether we need to proceed with injunctive hearings. So that, that was the reason.
The court docket issue?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak or ask a question? I don't see any others. I'd like to return to my colleagues first on the Board of Commissioners to see if there are any further comments or questions.
Yes, I have some comments, I guess. This has to be about the most unpleasant vote I've had to take since I was first elected to office six years ago. There are a lot of reasons why I'm really uncomfortable about this mediated settlement. I don't think there's anything in this agreement to make the neighbors feel better about the very unpleasant noise, traffic, and the smell of smoke that they've endured for the past couple of years. In my opinion, if it is found that the Huff's did do damage, the statement should make it clear that they only just came into compliance, instead of making it sound like they always were. And I understand that that statement can't be changed in any way. If the Huff's had immediately taken action to come into compliance with the county's ordinances, I don't believe anything that followed would have happened. So we did not create the need for the Huff's to be reimbursed, or whatever they're asking for. Being expected to pay them that $50,000 feels to me like they're being vindictive. I hate the possibility of people interpreting this to me, that you can pretty much do what you like with your property as long as you can pay for it, and possibly even collect money for it. Ultimately, this whole experience has made me feel bullied. But in spite of that, I do think it's extremely important that we get onto the property as quickly as we possibly can to take care of any erosion that might be occurring. That is vital for the reservoir, which provides all of our drinking water. I also do realize that the time consumption created by this for the legal department is, is really unreasonable. I feel it's unfortunate that that's the way the law has to work, but it does seem to be the way it does work. And also, in the end, the outcome won't be particularly different if we do win a trial than if we don't, except possibly monetarily. So, I'm very, very torn, but I probably feel that I do need to vote yes on this. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens, comments or any final thoughts?
Yeah, I, I feel very much like Commissioner Jones does, and I'm really saddened that any of this happened. It could have been prevented had the Huff's complied with our local ordinances with state law. But I think also that part of our primary purpose here is to protect the drinking water for our area and to protect Lake Monroe. And I think the fastest way to do that is to sign this, this mediated agreement. I'm not happy with components of it either, but I, I want to, I want to be able to get in there and make sure that any problems are corrected. So I, like Commissioner Jones, I will be voting to accept it.
And thank you to my colleagues, and I would say for my comments that, that I agree with, with both of you, it's, and I was even there during mediation, but mediation is one of those things where you hate half of what happens and like half of what happens, and that's the point of mediation. But it's still, I've, as I told Mr. Schilling, I've had buyer's remorse three times since, since that. But I keep coming back to doing the right thing for the future, drawing a line under past bad acts is not ideal, and I certainly don't want anybody to perceive that as the county being a pushover. I think if, if anyone asks us in the future about our county development ordinance, our CDO that we're working on, and why we're so strict, and what happens, well, this is one of the reasons why. Because if we're not clear, and we're not, if we don't have a code that, that allows us to, to do what we need to, to protect property owners and the lake, then we'll do what we have to do. But of course, part of this is, relates to state law that we cannot control. A good part of that property in question is not anything that we can control in terms of logging, and it stinks, and it's awful, and it's not fair to county residents, it's not fair to anybody who relies on Lake Monroe for drinking water, and it's certainly not fair to the neighbors. But it's something that we... But it's something that we can't control. So if, if you all are as upset about it as I am, I hope you contact your state representatives and senators, and let them know that you hate, hate, hate this current provision because of what it allows to happen. And with that, I will turn it back to Ms. Clemens for the Plan Commission comments and the vote from the Plan Commission, then we'll come back to us for the, for our vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I see that Mr. Garitas would like to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Margaret. A very quick question, I think. If this goes to litigation, will the insurance company represent the county as a part of, as a part of their coverage? Or do we, will we hire and have our legal staff represent the, the case?
You're on mute, Dave.
Thanks. The enforcement action is, is completely handled by the county. The counterclaim involves the insurance company, and they have certain options under the policies as to the discretion on, on what they're going to pay, and their assessment of whether the county has been cooperative in the defense of the action and so forth. So I can't really say what the extent of their involvement would be, but there would be some involvement on the counterclaim.
Okay, and Mr. McKim?
First of all, I particularly wanted to thank everybody who participated in the mediation. I'm sure that really must have been a slog. While I appreciated the, having the extra day to consider the agreement, my position is the same as that I expressed yesterday, which is that if we continue with litigation, even if things go incredibly well for us at trial, which there's a, a good chance they won't, the remedy will be barely distinguishable from the outcome of this mediated settlement, which is that the Huff's will be brought into compliance. And I appreciate Commissioner Jones' concerns, particularly as well as those of the members of the public who spoke today, but I think that it is the best, in the best interest of the public and in the county for reasons that have already been stated in this meeting, to move forward with this agreement, and I'll be voting thusly. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah, you know, I, I am in agreement with a lot of what's been said, and I, I just wanted to, to make the additional point, and it was just recently made, that the county is in the process of rewriting its, its zoning rules. And I know on the, the Plan Commission, you know, we often argue about what should be allowed in, in urban areas, but I think we're pretty much all in agreement that around Lake Monroe, we should be as protective as possible. And I hope in this process of rewriting those, those zoning rules, that if, if there is a way to write some more protections into the code, we can do that. And I'll also just, just finish by saying, you know, I'm going to support this agreement, mainly because I think compliance in the hand is, you know, worth more than compliance two years down the road, and, and any cost we might incur along the road, too. So, and I appreciate everyone's work on that. I'm glad I wasn't in a 10-hour mediation session, and I also hear the, the public comments, too. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough vote, but I'll be supporting the agreement.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who's a member of the Plan Commission?
Yes, I, I would, if I may be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Pittsford.
And, and I'll be very brief. Anytime you have to enter into memorandum of agreement like this, it, it's not a pleasant situation. And I think we can look at the Huff side and their actions and find a lot of what happened to be unacceptable to us, according to our ordinance. But when you have to go to an agreement, I think there's more to it than what we see just stated in this agreement. And that's why I did review a lot of the filings in, in the court related to this case. And I think if you haven't done that, you should go through there and look at some of the filings, in fact, and be illuminated on why we ended up where we are today. And with that, I'm prepared to make a motion, if you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Pittsford, please proceed.
I move to accept the memorandum of agreement between Monroe County, Indiana, and Monroe County, and the Monroe County Plan Commission collectively, and William J. Huff Second Revocable Trust, and Nicole E. Huff Revocable Trust, as a settlement related to case number 53C06-1905-PL-00125. That is my motion incomplete. Second.
So Mr. McKim has seconded the motion. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Just a second. Margaret Clemens?
Yes.
Bertie Garitas? Lee Jones? Oh, I'm sorry, not Lee Jones. Went back in time. Jerry Pittsford? Jeff McKim?
Yes.
David Warren?
Yes.
Jim Stainbrook?
Yes.
Trying to write right off?
You're, you're muted.
I know, it's not easy. Sorry to make a late statement, since I've served the public, and I don't have the extensive knowledge of maybe some repercussions that will be from this, some repercussions that will come from this, though I, I don't necessarily work in the same realm that our county commissioners or our county council do. So with that bliss of ignorance on my behalf, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, and did I call David Warren? I'm sorry.
You did.
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, according to my calculations, the motion is approved eight to zero?
I didn't vote.
Seven to one. Oh, Julie, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, according to my calculations, the, the agreement is approved by a seven to one vote.
Okay, and now I will turn to my colleagues for a motion, and if Mr. Wilson or Mr. Schilling can call the roll, if we could get a motion first.
I move that we accept the memorandum of agreement that, between Monroe County, Indiana, Board of Commissioners, and Monroe County Plan Commission, with the Huff's, as presented to us in this memorandum of agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Schilling, do you want to call the roll for us?
Certainly. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Voted three to zero, it passes.
Okay, I, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your, your comments, your emails from the public. We did take it into account, it's a really tough decision, I'm sure you understand that. And we appreciate your concern, and we hope you stay in touch with us and let us know if we can help you, because we've drawn, with this, we've drawn a line in the sand and drawn a line under the past, and we're looking to the future. I do want to thank my colleagues on the Plan Commission and on the Board of Commissioners for your attention to detail yesterday and today, and the time you took to, to think, think this through. And it is something where you're, you're going to find yourself going back and forth, and, and Mr. Schilling, Mr. Baker, Mr. Wilson, thank you also, and Ms. Clemens, thank you for all your help with the mediation. You're brilliant, you're brilliant people, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you all, thank you for everything that you've done. And again, this is an effort and an attempt to go forward and, and keep things in compliance. And that's what we're hoping for, expecting, and that's what will, we hope will bear out. So thank you very much.
Right, so we are adjourned at this meeting, and for those who wish to stand by, we are going to go back to our stormwater meeting, and I'll await Commissioner Jones calling that back to, back for recess, although I'd love a recess, a real one, where I can run and play tag with somebody. So we'll see if we can, we can do that, but I'm going to have to step off because I have a State Board of Accounts meeting, so I'll be on just for a few minutes here. I apologize for that.